Spend twenty eight innings in the next few years up here or talking to the night anyhow. But I'm loving some towns and towns on church bumping the bees get to so. Well, I'll take it personally if you're able to walk out. So it is it's actually seven, so let's go ahead and call it in the word, ask the court to call the rules.
Alex the set. Dan Gritko. Bill Heisen.
Here.
Eileen Morris.
Yeah.
Eddie Page.
Here.
You have. Good heavens. Let's do it now if you weren't by the power of the police.
Please do.
Still alive.
You know, that is big camera. Which is above, which stands. One nation under God, and it is all liberty and justice for all.
Hello. Next thing we're doing before we get into the actual consent calendar. Is we find the right one here. See Meredith this year, and I'd like for Meredith to step up to the sleeve, please. Well. And well, this is thousands and it's clearly enough, so the only thing to review, the Meredith was a faithful council member for almost a complete four years. Everybody has other things in their lives, and this is a volunteer job, and sometimes you have to just don't have time for everything. So on behalf of the town, I want to present you with this resolution. Whereas following four years in service as council member of the town of Scottsville, which they're hitting during their tenure as town council for the town of Scottsville from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty one. Meredith Highs has been an advocate and distinct voice for the Scottsville community. And whereas in addition to her responsibilities as councillor, she was a dedicated volunteer to the town cultural events and supportive of the administrative office. And whereas councillor Meredith Highs has contributed to the town council, her knowledge and understanding to reach better outcomes for the town of Scottsville. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, the mayor of the town of Scottsville, who does hereby recognize and deeply appreciates the contributions of Meredith Highs for many years of exceptional service to the town of Scottsville and its citizens. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting of the council of the town of Scottsville, Virginia, as a lasting testament to the esteem in which Meredith has had his help of the town of Scottsville for her service and work she has done to make the town of Scottsville better for future generations. What we have here is council number Allen Morris with the floor. Eileen is not going, uh, not running for real, but she can still be involved in, uh, hopefully with the emergency preparedness committee and anything else we call upon her to do. So I'd like to present the resolution that reads as follows. Following two years in service as council member of the town of Scottsville, Virginia, and during her tenure as town councillor for the town of Scottsville from February twenty second, twenty twenty three to December thirty first, twenty twenty four, Eileen Morris has been an advocate and distinct voice for the Scottsville community. And in addition to her responsibilities as councillor, she was a dedicated volunteer to the emergency preparedness of the community, advocate for accessibility and supportive of the development of the town of Scottsville. And whereas councillor Allen Morris has contributed to the town council, her knowledge and understanding to reach better outcomes for the town of Scottsville. And now for be it resolved that the mayor of the town of Scottsville hereby recognizes and deeply appreciates the contributions of Eileen Morris for her years of exceptional service to the town of Scottsville. And as citizens, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meeting of the council of the town of Scottsville, Virginia, as a lasting testament to the esteem in which Eileen is held by the town of Scottsville for her service and work she has done to make the town of Scottsville better for future generations. Thank you so much. On the agenda is a approval of the consent calendar, which is the approval of the agenda. The approval of Roscoe coming first, point four, council, uh, council record session meeting for minutes. And it's twenty, twenty third strike the session. And approval of the non-actual reports to September twenty fourth, October twenty fourth. We have a motion to approve the consent.
Could we, did the town minister ask to strike the December third? We have a draft, but we didn't provide a sufficient time to share that with council.
Yeah, adjusted.
I would maybe just make a motion so that we could post hoc, just edit them and then.
Yeah.
So just, I was just repeat what you sent over email, councillor Heisen. Which was editing.
The vote was not correct. Hello, we could amend, just to correct most of that, the, and that's the rest of that's fine.
And then amending Eddie's.
Would you like to make a motion to, uh, strike the light until the correct one is presented to the council?
So let's strike the, the minutes until the, 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 the minutes for the.
There's a second.
And any discussion? All those in favor? So with that deleted from the consent calendar, do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar as it remains?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. Next on our, uh, our agenda is our public forum. Anyone in the public wishes to speak, now is your time. Seeing no one step forward, we will close the public forum. Uh, my report, uh, not a whole lot different than what I gave at the work session, which consisted mainly of having spent a lot of time giving holiday happenings, uh, together with the favor of the work and other volunteers. And it was a great day, as mentioned, a lot of people in town, a lot of stuff going on. And, uh, other events I've done, I met with the both of our new councillors, Javier and I, we went over all the intricacies of, uh, Freedom of Information Act and I think those things that they all need to be knowledgeable of. And they were giving their study materials to be ready to go on January first.
There's a test.
Oh, there was another thing I wanted to mention, I had invited the, uh, uh, Salvation Army to set up a bell ringing station down here for the holiday happenings. And, uh, if, if Matt Holt were here tonight, I would thank him for taking part with helping them. Uh, they set up at the farmer's market and I got to talk to them yesterday. And they, the day before yesterday, and they, uh, received two hundred and forty dollars in donations during a few hours to sit down here. So that was my report. Uh, Javier, you want to take over staff report?
Yeah, so I think I have two bullet points in our ruling staff report. One of them was just to talk a little bit about the September and October financial statements. So I'll start with the September, which is, should be relatively familiar. And then, um, we tried a new format for the October, um, that Melanie will, uh, will help me out a little bit with. Um, but for the September, um, we touch upon most of these financials when I did that staff report about a month ago, their quarterly review. Um, this is just solidifying it into a financial statement, but the front end is, uh, pretty much the, um, the brief comparing this year's September twenty twenty four to last year's September twenty twenty three. So we're, um, this, this time this year, checking account in September was a hundred and forty two thousand compared to seventy six last year. Um, that's just, uh, funding coming in. Um, beyond that, you'll see that, uh, Padwell is at two forty five compared to last year, two thirty six. And then the G, LGIP, uh, the other account called the Scottsville account, count up is one seventy compared to one sixty three this time last year. Um, that increase in about ten thousand in both of them, give or take three thousand, it's just because um, interest rates haven't dropped as fast as we kind of anticipate them um, with treasury kind of indications, even if, you know, we recently had to have one go down. Um, LGIP is lagging a little bit behind that, but will benefit from the, uh, return on interest. Um, beyond that, I think the most interesting is us cutting into the October financial statement. Um, I believe last month we got input from town council that, um, you were looking at maybe a, um, reorganization of financial statements for some clarity and something closer to an executive summary I put in. Um, so on the first page, Melanie was working on a, uh, income versus expenses for the first December, what's five months in? Yeah, so first five months of the fiscal year from July twenty twenty four to October twenty twenty four. Um, so you have what, uh, negative fifty three percent in expenses, it's expensive, and then forty percent revenue.
Um, so we're about six percent difference between our expenses and our income right now. Um, if you look at the second chart down, um, the income by entities. Um, it's, I have I've broken out our income from budgeted to actual. Where we are, are kind of falling short right now is the, um, meals tax, B poll, cigarette tax were down. And that's because we have some delinquencies that we haven't captured fully yet. Um, we've talked to them, they're supposed to be in by this month, so we just keep calling.
Oh, wait, are they?
Um, El Casador, I think he's a little confused on how to fill out his taxes, so we're, we're what, two months behind on him? I think he's two months. Um, Amici's was two months, I got one of his, yes, or Friday, and he owes us one. Um, that's my big ones that are out there right now.
Okay.
Um, our revenue from the state from sales tax is a little lower than expected due to lower sales, like this, nobody's buying anything. Um, everything else, we're, we're pretty much on track, or like the county were a little bit above, stronger than projected. Um, at, at this time, so uh, the other kind of what we've heard from the past week, we had four businesses in town closed. Um, which is gonna put us at a twelve thousand dollar a year deduction compared to where we were at unless something else goes into those spaces that is going to either be a restaurant for meals tax or B poll.
What happened to the daycare? That we have here too.
They, they're, they're, uh, active right now, but the only, the only.
Might go by there in a.
Generation?
Yeah.
Honestly.
But the only time we ever capture because of the category of work they do is certain business licenses, so we won't realize that until.
No, I was just curious because I was walking the other day and I didn't see them, and I didn't know if it was a polyp or what was going on.
Maybe, uh, you could tell today they were there, just from the outside, you know, stuff.
So we got, um, Ludi Bells and Batto were two of those businesses.
Moody Bells, Batto, the outdoor store across the street. What's the fourth one?
No way, I think you're shot.
Well, you're shot.
Oh.
Yeah, River Ben Boutique.
Got you.
So, you know, we're thinking our biggest one is Batto because they had Mills Tax, which is about eleven thousand dollars a year. And that's a big drop.
I've been talking about revenue, we need to really focus on revenue generation. So for the councillors coming in, I know, um, had some ideas about that. Hope you had some good creative ideas because it's gonna get tough, potentially tougher. Already we're seeing the the tail, uh, or at least the head of this, I think there's more to come if we're not careful.
And I think it's important for staff, we're working on enforcement, so we can do that. We are, um, we're within our, um, usual cash flow for our checking accounts. So that, that's a good indication, but it'd be interesting, and I'll report back to council as we come out of winter into the spring when we have B poll and then meals tax picks up and see where we kind of stand there and then, um, just keep the council informed on that, but it's slow season and then seeing some closures, um, I thought it was worthwhile just mentioning that to, uh, council.
Yeah.
Uh, Melanie, actually, she's the one who caught it, so okay, full credit there.
Penalty for delinquency, they're late, mother two, okay. And go that term, I don't think.
Yes, and I think we're gonna enforce that.
It hasn't been really enforced past years. But I think it's something that, you know, with trying to keep the revenue up and keeping it in, we need to start enforcing it heavily.
We've been neighborly.
Yeah, Javier, I know it was announced about talking to, uh, one in particular is the gentleman up the road here that has, she's all saying his accounting business, and he has either a business license or a permit for the sign. Javier's been on him about that, and next, he's ready to go to the next step, which is register letter and threat of legal action.
Yeah.
So those are just things that we, we've talked today about a couple of other places in town that, uh, we think maybe needs a little fire lit under a little to get them moving.
The question that I have is the antique place that's right there beside Dollar General. I've seen people in and out of there, so I know he's doing work, and I know he's selling online because I've seen his online store. But I can't, we can't get any type of.
Recent information.
Recent information, any answer for him, we've put a letter on his door, we've put, you know, I, I just, we just can't get him to answer back.
I, I know him personally, and so I will.
From what I can tell, he's never had a business license.
Yeah, that'd be appreciated.
So he'll get the word somewhere or other.
Um, I think this is a good spot to run in, and then as, as mentioned over email, I'd like to, and then the year with new council members, and of course, we'll be able to do a six month and kind of hit the ball roll and, or hit the ground running with a budget because we're already there.
Yeah, just make sure you're very realistic on what those budget, you know, projections are gonna be because they may not even be as good as they were last.
Yeah, um, in some respects for projections, it's helpful that these occur prior to, rather than me having to adjust after doing the first draft, so. Uh, but yeah, I agree, councillor Morse.
Any other questions with the staff? Uh, Alex is not here, David's not here, neither one of those committees or commissions have, uh, met since they gave their reports at work session, so uh, we can bypass them and just do anything that, uh, emergency preparedness needs to update us on or, or government services.
Just a couple of things from EPC, one is that we did meet with the pastor council, Laura Sutton, I guess is her name? Is that right?
Laura Stratt.
Stratt.
Stratt, sorry.
Okay. Um, she was, um, very interested and engaged, she said she will bring some of the information back. We learned from, um, Helene that the churches actually played a really big role in, um, getting supplies out to people in need before on the ground on the ground organizations could actually get in and whatnot, so we talked her back to them potentially through her about, um, getting engaged in emergency preparedness for the town should a severe incident occur. So, um, so that was good, she's gonna take that message back to the pastor council and get back to us. The other thing is, um, I asked for a meeting with the county because the county has an ops plan, and as I've said before, it is never our intention to override the county's plan, but the county has told us that we need to be prepared to be on our own for up to seventy two hours, potentially more, depending on the severity of the incident and the scope of the incident. So our plan covers that seventy two hours and potentially beyond. I've asked for a meeting with the county, but I'm hearing that we're not gonna have that for another six months. And that's just not, is that the joint meeting that we talked about, or is there something?
Joint meeting of the council. Uh, it's in six months, it's that May meeting, so, but.
Can we get something sooner?
Yes, so, um, I'm gonna try to talk to Brandy tomorrow.
Okay.
And see if I can either get our next.
It would be good in January, like later in January, Javier, if we could.
Yeah. I offered that date also to him, so I passed along, so I think we're on board to meet with staff. And then, um, of course, we'll continue and have a joint, uh, board and council session in May.
Okay, yeah, that's independent of EPC though, right? Yeah, right, I'm just concerned about EPC.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, good, thank you. That's it.
Anything new on government services and powers?
Well, neither, neither committees met this as well, uh, but with just bringing up speed, now you're probably gonna be changing now that, uh, you're hearing about the budget, but with the government services, definitely looking at the capital planning plan, which is, you know, what we'd like to do or what town could do in the next five years, and, you know, we're up here. Uh, and then the other thing is with the parks, you know, we're waiting on a few signs, but we also would like to get some bids, and I think we ought to at least try to get some bids, even though we can't pay for them, for the road and for, um, fixing up Canal Basin Square, I think we have some donations for that a little bit, but there's some, might be out of donation to improve both the, uh, the park and Canal Basin Square, so, you know, maybe we get some bids, we'll, we'll meet next month or about that.
Any questions for? What else? Let's do one, five nine, and, uh, with the benefit of those in the audience, uh, I was talking here to explain what we do before I call the public hearing.
Yeah, so, um, in recent months, we had a breakdown in our last, uh, uh, pickup we had for our maintenance staff. Currently, our twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, uh, and capital expenses would not, uh, there's no room for an unexpected, uh, breakdown in that vehicle. So we, uh, started discussions maybe the twenty first or twenty second regular session of November about all the public hearing and above, uh, around a budget amendment to anticipate those expenses and, uh, get our, uh, maintenance department up to a hundred percent of capability for, uh, the important task of maintaining our town's, our, uh, our town. Um, in broad strokes, I presented, uh, December third, a budget and, um, it included a, um, a reappropriation of fifteen thousand five hundred from the administrative line due to, uh, um, uh, us anticipating not a change, not changing in a, uh, accounting firm for this year. Uh, four thousand in unexpected miscellaneous revenue, which was a, uh, uh, a salvage cost from a previous breakdown or totaling of a F one fifty we had for maintenance, and then, um, was five thousand five hundred, I believe, uh, from the general, uh, um, expected, uh, revenue or expected, uh, surplus for this fiscal year would be the correct way to say for government. Um, that totals out to a flat twenty five thousand for a reappropriation with a, uh, about five thousand dollar reduction in the general expected, uh, surplus for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Um, also in the meantime, uh, our gator broke down last week. Um, what I might suggest, because, uh, Mr. Heisen sent out an email, is, uh, council might, if, if they're interested, giving some discretion, seeing if we could try to pick up a used pickup truck for under that total and then look at a side by side, something used, that would probably be the most feasible within that budget. Um, but in the end, uh, I think the most prudent is to, the very end, I think the most important thing for uh, us as staff is to get them a maintenance vehicle, something that would be reliable until we are able to phase out all police vehicles and phase them into the maintenance department, uh.
Well, we don't know that that's guaranteed to happen though, right?
Um.
We'd like to know, right?
Well, that's not what I've heard, I think it's still up in the air, Eddie, can you comment?
And where is he here?
I thought that was here, thought at one point it was, was a go, and then, well, we have to wait, there's some things, the board hasn't decided yet, has the board made a decision?
From the beginning, you know, I stated it clearly, there was nothing promised, but it was our firm intention, our being the other board to, uh, uh, make the proper donations to the proper agencies to procure a new vehicle. But it's just like people up here, it's five more than there too. So I can't speak for them, but this is what I got from the committee, and we did sit down and we had, we did give the board, and we did pick out six, uh, projects. It's just a matter of the judge signing all for it, that's, that's the only idea, and.
Right now, we're just talking about making this vehicle and twenty five thousand dollar, you know, moving it around from one place to another, which is the purpose of our public hearing.
I wish it would work out.
And, um, the lease vehicle, that's a whole nother story, so.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah.
I don't think we can count on that at this point.
At least we didn't own the law code that went across the search of the power lines. Yeah, I would have been, yeah, that would have worked, budget.
And then prior, uh, to public hearing also, uh, uh, on December third, I provided an, uh, available on the website, our budget and also our, uh, accompanying resolution also. Uh, and of course, we had copies in the office available in a public notice, properly public notice too, so, yeah.
So what we need to do now is open public hearing, which, open the public hearing, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak towards the shifting of funds in our budget in order to, uh, place our disabled and no longer worthy now maintenance vehicles. And here we go, response from the audience, public hearing is not closed, so it's up to council, uh, whether to move this, make this money available by shifting it from one place to another.
I'll make a motion that we make the money available, shifting from one position to another.
Okay, sure, second. How much is it?
One five thousand.
It's just, it's over here, we need to move it over there.
Can I, can I ask a question first, or do we have to finish the motion?
Second.
Can I ask a question first, or do we have?
Well, it's, we have a motion on.
I'll, I'll second it.
Your second, and now.
But I'd ask the questions too.
Yeah, now we can have just all the discussion you wanna have.
Hmm.
Um, the only thing that I would say is I'm not in favor of splitting that money for a gator and a truck. Mine is to just focus on the truck. I think we should make this as safe and as bulletproof and so that we're not sitting around here leaving it for the next round of councillors to adjust to. Uh, I think if we have to, and I think we should, buy another gator. I think we should look at long-term funds for that or some other solution because we try to squeeze too much into that envelope. We'll be looking at probably next year, let's get the safest long-term vehicle that we can and give our staff the tools to do the job. That's not my opinion.
Yeah, Ms. Morse, I think it'd let us be a little bit more competitive, as everybody knows, truck prices are pretty high.
Absolutely.
From the research we have done. And then, um, I will point out that the, uh, the resolution and the budget itself, uh, if approved through this motion, would adhere to that just from.
It's just for the truck.
Yes, the budget line says replacement of truck.
I, I also, you know, recently, uh, it was donated to the town, so it wasn't never purchased by the town, so, you know, it's not, it's a thing that the town never had before this one came. So it might be a good idea to have it, but if we're gonna possibly have two trucks down the road, possibly, that would be first, and then if we didn't get a truck, maybe then we'll get it here, but that's my feeling.
But the gator is gonna go places where the trucks can't potentially.
Well, I think it's a good fuel, but you could probably go a lot of places, but but it would be good to have that, uh, an extra thing like that too. Uh, but, uh, the other thing we want to say, I don't think it needs to be top of the line. It's, it doesn't have to be a parade truck, it's, I think it needs to be a decent truck, it's, it's gonna get beat up, all those trucks can really get beat up. As they're, you know, calling gravel and tools and they're gonna, so, you know, a decent truck, but, you know, it doesn't have to be perfect, you know, but, you know, there's a lot of good trucks out there you can get for a hundred twenty five thousand.
Uh, I think staff will be pretty keen on getting a good work truck.
Yeah.
That would fit that category.
Right.
And it's just by way of purchase or lease. And is this by way of purchase or lease? Both have been discussed.
And if we approve this, would you probably get this within a week, I think, I think.
I believe the delay would be us making sure we're making the right person. And that would be the most.
Yeah, our maintenance person needs just.
There's supposed to be a moment seconded and discussed. Is there any further discussion? Let's have a voice vote on this one.
Bill Heisen? Eileen Morse? Edward Payne?
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Pretty good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the procurement of P cards to the police department. Would someone like to open the discussion or was there a light of a motion?
Does anybody have any questions about these? So the P cards, it stands for procurement cards, it's basically for our. Um police officers, the police chief currently has a card that's to be used in for emergencies, but the officers do not. And um it's the feeling of the committee and others that the officers should have. Their own cards in the event that the chief is not around or something happens and they need to um. To expedite funds for something particular. Last uh work session, I shared the rules governing that, um the use of those P cards. The chief will take responsibility for monitoring them and all um charges will be. Um brief to the town office and um. Charges on those cards will be for emergency purposes only, so that's the the net.
Discussion. Motion to approve.
I motion to approve.
Second. Now, we feel could have more discussion if you need.
Well, it's just, but what's the, what's the limit on this? Because I I don't know what it was. It's it's like a visa or it's like a badge.
Yeah, so I think what we could do in the meantime before I, I'm working on a credit card policy. Our current cards all have limits on them. And they're reduced, especially uh co- uh comparative to your role for the government, so um. What I could do is talk with uh. Uh the chief of police and see what's an appropriate role. I believe it, I believe it shouldn't be a very high minimum, but it needs to be sufficient for use cases, which would be.
I think it was around three hundred dollars. Chief, can you confirm?
Yes, ma'am, we were discussing that anywhere between two hundred to five hundred dollars.
What's the minimum yours?
Mine's the uh, it's not a P card, it's a credit card, it's two thousand dollars.
So think of the use cases, that seems an appropriate amount to get something in an emergency in town.
Do we need to specify that in? I think we should um approve three, three cards for the officers at five hundred dollars. Given that the chief's is two thousand. These are only going to be used for emergency purposes. These officers can be terminated if they use it for other purposes. Chief has to monitor and report to. Council and to town staff on their use, so I see very little risk here.
So your motion is now to procure the cards of the national.
Motion so made, Mr. Mayor.
It's already been seconded, it's just clarification of the initial. A motion and so we'll call for a voice vote on this one.
Bill Heisen? Eileen Morse? Edward Payne? Motion passes three to zero.
Next is the flock safety camera. Program and I think Chief thoroughly discussed that at work session, but he is here and he's. Have any questions about that, you know, I'm sure he'd be glad to address those. Uh we can do that after a motion is made um. In one way or the other, to either go with the program or project.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed lock safety camera equipment.
I second.
I second and now we're open for discussion and any questions might have a chief.
Uh there's gonna be four. Four cameras, let you. Is it four cameras? I think we did that last week, it was four cameras.
Yes, sir, that's the plan.
Two of the uh the police station, two of the of the other end. Yes, sir. Question I have is, I just thought, I don't know if you mentioned, but is there gonna be a sign? Uh around those cameras, uh what it is, or is it just gonna, it's just gonna be. No, okay, so if someone sees it, they won't know what it is. Correct, I just want.
I I did plan on and um. Thought that it was a good idea that maybe uh if approved by council this evening to do a Q and A. Type paper uh and post it uh on the police department. Um what, so just our Facebooks and social media? Just so if someone had questions about what it is, outline what it is, what it isn't. And that type of stuff.
That's a great idea.
Thought we would do that, but I wanted to wait. And uh see how things work this evening before I move forward with that. I have a draft policy in place, a general order in place as well, if we're governing or police department abuse.
Hey, you move them around, once you found somewhere the station or.
Yeah, they're stationary, ma'am. We talked about it, it's not optimal.
That would be maybe opportunity to put it all around.
Yeah, but there's some calibration issues that go along with that from what I understood with talking with our partners at Block Safety, so. It's dual. Um the intersections, I'm sorry.
That makes sense. I mean, they have to be at the right height and, you know, offensive.
Bright angles and things like that. Uh the locations that uh we were, this that we've discussed was uh. East Main Street down at the police department, east and west on East Main Street. The police department, north and south down on Valley. Then again, over at uh piece of private property on Irish Road. And then a private piece of property over on. Valley Street at James River Road in that area. Um the private properties will require me to get a um. And send signature from the property owners. I've communicated that the parties that own those properties and they've all committed that they were interested in. Those cameras being on their properties. We 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 opted out of the two-year, twenty-four contract to twelve month. That way, should this grant uh not come through, through the state police heat program. That the town was not obligated to the the second year. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars, so it. The twelve-month contract, which they agreed to, the the system, the program will be fully funded through a grant. Uh we, the town, would put the twelve five forward. Once that is spent and I have the receipt showing pain, it's submitted to the state police and they may reimburse back to the town.
Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Bill Heisen? Eileen Morse? Edward Payne? Motion passes three to zero.
They police vehicle that um. We discussed pretty thoroughly at work session. You need to explain exactly what kind of motion we need out there.
Yes, so it would just be a motion authorizing uh. Uh for um. For the town to reimburse, uh for the town to. To expense uh the purchase of the vehicle in the case of a delay on. Uh reimbursement or reimbursement, I guess would be the word, the police foundation for donation of a vehicle to. Uh the police department of the town of Scottsdale.
I still motion.
And is there a second? Further discussion on that line.
Yeah, the the most that that disbursement would be, would be seventy-five thousand or fifty thousand, what was, do we have?
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand, okay.
Forty-three is the last one.
Well, for the one that's proposed is forty-eight A O five, and we're talking about the truck, correct?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Bill Heisen? Eileen Morse? Edward Payne? Motion passes three to zero.
At the last time on the agenda, when we had this joint meeting in May with Albemarle County. Um we need to start making our list of what we want to talk about with them. So uh I don't need to think we uh we need to go ahead to making a list tonight, we'd be thinking about what you would like to have on the list and will. File a pretty thorough list of questions and uh areas which we need to talk to them about uh. And get answers to any questions you have.
Can we get something out to the public so they can? Have a voice.
Yeah, let's do that at the uh first in the meeting in January, let's put out the word. Put out the word that uh. We're open to any suggestions from citizens as to what they'd like to see and where your questions will be coming.
Yeah, uh I'm not, I'm not interested in what the council would have to say as much as what they would bring back to the council. We know what we're gonna say, you know, about in a month's time, so.
Maybe that could be website too late, just. Picking out the point.
I think that's a worthwhile because also we'll have new council members and we'd want their input for the meeting. Natural.
Okay, is there anything else on anybody's mind?
Like to wish everybody a merry Christmas.
Appreciate all that everybody does to. People can't believe it sometimes, I felt it this morning that uh her her son-in-law is involved, he either gets elected to Congress or he got elected to. The state house in um Maryland, Mrs. Maryland. She couldn't believe we did this before. So we're without any burger, having a council members present, uh here to ensure.
So moved.
And second.
Well, even before you get away, I want to thank you for everything you've done.